Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the April twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-four ZBA, or zoning board of adjustments meeting. Our next meeting will be May twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-four, here at six-thirty PM in the Matthew Thornton Room. If everyone could please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And Wolf, if I could have you please read in the preamble?
Good evening to those in attendance and watching at home. For the benefit of those who have not previously attended the zoning board hearing, the procedure is as follows. The petitions will be heard in the order they appear on the agenda, however, however, the chair may change the order at their discretion. The board will treat all petitioners, their representatives, abutters, and other interested parties fairly and with respect. The petitioner will be asked to give an overview of their petition and read through the responses to the criteria applicable to their case, allowing for the board to ask questions after each item. State law and local ordinances establish the criteria that must be met in order for the board to grant approval to a petition. And it is the petitioner's responsibility to demonstrate that they have met each criterion. Following the presentation, the chair will open the floor for public comment, either in favor or opposed to the request. If necessary, an opportunity for rebuttal will be offered to the petitioner in public. However, discussion will not be allowed to devolve into back-and-forth arguments. All comments made shall be directed toward the chair. Should a question be asked, the chair will pose the question to the petitioner. Afterward, the chair will close the public hearing, and the board will deliberate and vote on the petition. At this time, please silence all mobile devices.
All right, thank you. And for anyone that's looking to speak tonight, please raise your right hand to be sworn in. So anyone that's going to speak at any point this evening. Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
All right, thank you. Next, Chuck, can I ask you to sit in for Ben tonight? All right, thank you so much. All right, so now that we have a quorum, we'll go ahead and get started. For the SC Development LLC, I'm actually going to jump to item four first, if that's okay with you guys, because that's, I know, the topic of conversation, which is the variance under section two-point-oh-two-point-nine-B-one of the zoning ordinance to permit a proposed elderly housing development to be serviced by private septic systems, whereas public sewers required. Parcels located at twenty-nine Bedford Road in the R-one residential by soils, aquifer conservation district and wellhead protection area, tax map six-D, lot two-forty-one, case ZBA twenty-twenty-four dash oh-three, and this item has been continued since January. So after we have a quick conversation about what we kind of ended up on the January meeting, I'd then like to kind of re-go through the five points, just in case we have questions with the new information, and then move on to items two and three after, if that's okay.
Good evening, chair members of the board. Brett Allard with Shaughnessy Allard for the record. I think that's on now. Brett Allard with Shaughnessy Allard and the attorney for the applicant SC Development LLC. As you said, we were here in January on a number of variances for this project at Bedford Road, which is tax parcel six-D-two-forty-one in the R-one by soils district. It's about eight-point-seven acres with seventy-nine feet of frontage on Bedford Road and twenty feet of frontage on Cabot Road, and it's been vacant for decades, and my understanding is it's an old gravel pit. Just sort of a refresher on the basic property information and what we're looking at tonight. So back in January, we were proposing the original application for a fifty-five-plus independent living condominium development. And what we proposed at that point was fifteen freestanding, single-family-type dwellings, two bedrooms each, about fourteen, one thousand four hundred and fifty square feet each, access being off a proposed new private road off the northerly side of the Bedford-David Road intersection. That was going to be on a cul-de-sac, and each dwelling would have its own dedicated parking. Served by municipal water, there is municipal water in here. There's an eight-inch water main that runs along Bedford Road, right by the frontage of the site. And at that time, we were proposing septic systems, but there was obviously some concerns, if the board recalls, from the discussion we had in January about the septic systems. And what happened was the meeting was continued in order for us to gather some more info on the viability of bringing septic into the site. We were then, we then continued again in February. We needed a little bit more time. We ended up meeting with DPW to discuss the sewer infrastructure in the area and what the viability was of bringing it into the site and what that, how was going, that was going to work, you know, logistically, financially, et cetera. And again, we continued in March because there wasn't a full board. So since January, we have developed multiple sort of proposed alternative concepts for the site, and those have been forwarded to the board for the board's consideration. So I just wanted to walk through those very briefly. One, the first concept was, again, that fifteen-unit, single-family-type elderly housing unit on the septic. Those required all three variances that we requested in the original application and that are still on the table tonight. That was the use for the proposed elderly housing development being outside the one-mile radius of the intersection of Babusak Lake and DW Highway intersection. We're about a little over half a mile outside. The frontage, because this lot only has seventy feet of frontage on Bedford Road, and that was for the septics, because the elderly housing development regulations require that these types of developments be on municipal sewer. So since that time, we have submitted a number of alternative concepts, which Matt is going to talk about in more detail, but just briefly. The second concept we've developed and submitted for the board's consideration is essentially just a scaled-back version of that original application. It took those fifteen units and dialed them back to ten. So it's five units less intense than it was, again, trying to be mindful of the fact that this proposal, this proposed concept, would still be on septic systems, and all three of those variances would still be required, use frontage and the septic. The third concept we have submitted would be for a sort of sixty-eight-unit garden-style elderly housing project on sewer. This would be on municipal sewer. This concept would only require two variances, the use and the frontage, obviously the sewer, the septic variance would no longer be required. So with respect to those three concepts, just as a sort of housekeeping matter, as we work our way through the three variances that are on the table tonight, I think the board could grant any one of those three sort of concepts at the meeting tonight. They're all within the scope of the original pending application, because they're all requests for relief from the same elderly housing development regulations and the zoning ordinance. If it was going to be, you know, the, if the will of the board was for the ten-unit rather than the fifteen, for example, that could be established with a condition of approval. And, you know, conversely, if it was the will of the board that the garden-style sixty-eight unit or however many, you get the eight units per acre under the development regs, was more preferable, then we could, you know, withdraw the septic variance, because it wouldn't be applicable anymore. So I just wanted to point out that, you know, there's three sort of concepts that are before the board, but they're all part of the same ball of wax, you know, the same, they're all subject to sort of the same requests for relief from the same provisions of the ordinance. So, you know, I think they're all properly before this board. The fourth concept, which is something that's completely new, is that would require a new application. So this one is really, is really put out there on a conceptual basis, and that was the, essentially, a standard three-lot subdivision. This would require frontage from section three-point-oh-two, because now the elderly housing is off the table. And, you know, we can, we can talk about this some more, but we thought that this would be the most viable alternative to the elderly housing proposal. We think the elderly housing proposal is still the best option, still the most viable option, but if it wasn't, if this lot, you know, with the understanding that it's not going to remain vacant forever, you know, if it's going to be something someday, and it's not going to be elderly housing, this is probably, this is what we came up with as the most viable alternative. So as you can see, a lot of work has gone into this since we were here in January. At Janu-, in January, at that first meeting, we realized that there were a fair amount of concerns about the septic, and we really wanted to thoroughly vet all the viable options as it relates to the future development of the site. We recognize that the neighbors have come out for several meetings that have been continued, and we appreciate their patience and the board's patience as we did our due diligence here and worked through all of the options and alternatives. So given that and what we have before the board tonight, we believe that these concepts represent reasonable compromises between the board's concerns, the neighbors' concerns, while also balancing the client's right to put this underutilized lot to its most reasonable use. So that's sort of what I have on a preliminary housekeeping basis. I'm happy to go through the variance criteria, although I think it would make sense to turn it over to Matt first to discuss everything we've learned since January about the sewer infrastructure in the area and what the viability of that is in order to bring it into the site.
So I guess before we get started, I do have a couple of questions about the information that is here. One is, am I correct in assuming that the reason for these alternate options is so that there are other possibilities should one of the three variances not pass, namely the sewer one?
Yes.
Okay.
If the, if, if, for example, the frontage variance was granted and the use variance was granted, but the sewer variance was not, that would effectively be approving something like the garden-style sixty-eight unit, because it would allow the use and it would allow the frontage, but now we have to bring in sewer. At the same time, we could go up to eight units per acre. So that's not to say it would definitely be a one-building, sixty-eight-unit garden style, but it would certainly take the ten or fifteen, single-family, concept out of play, just because logistically it wouldn't work to bring in the sewer for a project of that size and scale.
Okay, and for sixty-eight units, no further variances are needed if there's sewage there? Or if there's...
It would only be the use and the frontage. No further variances would be required.
Okay. All right, that's, that's all the questions I had. Are there any questions from the board?
Right off the bat, I can tell you, I mean, I'm not in favor of hearing about different options. I want to hear what the option is. It's not a matter of the board to make a decision on what the best option is, it's the matter of what they want to put up there. They got to put, decide what they want to put up there, and then they got to say, this is what we're going to put up here, and then we hear, otherwise, your option one is this, option two is this, option four is this, it could be potentially, what are we approving? It's just, that's just not...
That's exactly, I agree, one-hundred-and-ten percent. That's why we submit what we did. We're here for three variances. Either grant this lot to have elderly with sewer, yea or nay? Let it have elderly with the frontage? And let it have the elderly with the, what was our third one, sewer, frontage, and the use?
So if we grant one, then the other two go away?
No. No.
But if we fail one, we don't lose the other two.
All right, if you grant, if you deny number one, if you say, no, it has to have sewer, but then you say yes to the other two, then we have the ability to elderly on the property that we asked for, and then we go to the planning board.
Okay.
And Patrick, just to add, in our staff memo, I guess, on our cheat sheet, we had noted that the board, when making a motion, should cite specifically what they're approving. So you guys approve a fifteen condo, or fifteen, single-family development for the fifty-five-plus, that they don't turn around and then go submit a sixty-four unit to the planning board, so that you're intense there, and we have to make that known as well.
And the only reason why, Patrick, the last one, I really just threw out there, was if the abutters got up and had some questions, we would come back to you. It's not something that you could vote on tonight, I know that, and I'm not putting that in front of you. I really appreciate the board's patience, the abutters. You know, this is on me, I mean, these guys come to me with parcels right now, and if you haven't realized, they're not easy parcels. Everything that's left in New Hampshire is either steep, slope, wetlands, abutters, in an area that people have used for fifteen, twenty years, something like that. So I've got to work to try and find out what can happen on this. I really thought the fifteen origin that I submitted to you guys was a compromise because of the elderly allowing the eight per unit and having something at sixty-eight, I thought with the surrounding neighbors didn't make sense, so I came with the fifteen. However, at the meeting, certain members of the board said, if you have sewer, do elderly. Well, okay, then I went back and looked at what the zone allows for that, and then I had to look at the sewer. And as I was going to outline here for the sewer, you guys have a master plan booklet that you guys had done in April of twenty thirteen, and this was your sewer kind of master plan. There's not many copies of this around. My boss happened to have one in his office in his closet, so it was nice to get there. And then when I brought this down to meet with DPW, there's a lot of recommendations in this. This thing has all your different sections in town, and the map that's up in front of you here is all, they've got these numbers of eighteen, twenty-one, five, ten. Those are all projects that you had in this twenty-thirteen master plan for sewer. Since that time, as you know, Everett Turnpike is being redone. You guys have sewer lines that go underneath, right up here in this location here, that go underneath the turnpike right now. The DPW, Merrimack, has been told, you need to fix that now, because we're putting in this road. So basically, all their allocations are going to fixing that. They had ideas of putting in pump stations and searing a lot of all these avenues that are out there. Talking to them, that's off the table right now, as far as they're moving forward. They're trying to handle what the state's asking them to do with the Everett Turnpike. So there are no real master plan improvements that I know of or that he knew of that are moving forward. So with that, we looked at, there's basically three options we have. And I apologize, last time, Chuck, I did not have all this information, but when I spoke to you there, I had said that the one manhole was up on Belmont. That is up at this location here. It's kind of right before the hook at the end of it there. This is the high point of the road, and then it drops down all the way to our property and in. So one of our options would be to build a pump station. Again, like I said, Patrick, numbers two and three are still on the table. We can move forward with, if you guys deny sewer. The parcel could go forward as an elderly project, potentially. There's a lot of still, I haven't solved every issue right now. I mean, I'm just kind of getting an overview, so that I can give my client some information, so he can start making some determinations. But this one here would require us to put in a pump station on our property, because we're kind of down in a hole. And then it would require to run a force main either up Small Lane, I just don't know if Small Lane connects all the way through there. Like I said, I have not physically gone out all the way, but I know through the woods, I think you could go, and I've got to talk to town. Or we would go up Back River Road to Belmont Drive, and then run all the way up Belmont Drive with a force main to that manhole and dump in there. There would probably be options for the homes to tie in, they would have to put in their own pump station, so it's not gravity system, because it's going uphill. So they'd have to put in a pump station, and then they'd be able to tie into the force main, as long as they coordinate everything with the pumps and stuff like that. That is done. Lots of towns have those in place and stuff like that. So it is an option. The second option I looked at is the Baptist Church, the Bedford Road Baptist Church. There is a town sewer that runs through there. That one is, I'm sorry, the first one, though, is about forty-two-hundred linear feet. I did not clarify that. That's how long the force main would be to get to that one. The second one here would be about twenty-eight-hundred linear feet. Talking to DPW, he believes that there's probably mostly sand out there. However, he goes five feet, in some places he hits ledge, and some places he goes back five, it's sand. So he says, Matt, I can't tell you one-hundred percent if it's going to be sand or not, but we seem to get pretty good luck out there on that. And then the third option, which was brought to me by Steve Keach, my boss, he's been doing some work with the Ravencroft Association. Their roads are in disrepair right now, they're looking to do some improvements in there. They have town sewer in there. It's a lot closer if we tied there, but I have not reached out to their association yet, but that would be a third option, that, again, if you said the site needed sewer, we would look at all three of these options to see which one is most valuable, and then, again, how much that costs to move forward the project. So whether it moves forward or not, we would have a lot more due diligence to do, but if you were to grant the variances two and three, we would start that homework and take a look at it and see what those numbers came back, and we wouldn't be in front of you guys for months and months and months.
Matt?
Yep.
The last, on the Ravencroft option, that's on private land, so you would have to get easements?
Yeah, yeah.
And their permission to do that.
Absolutely.
It's obviously the closest one, the cheapest one to do, but you've got to get their permission.
Correct, yes. It may not be the cheapest because of that, because there may be some back and forth on what we would end up doing on this end of side, so, but, again...
But actual building of it...
Location is much closer.
Yeah.
Yes, much closer. It's actually, so their units go all the way out to the end here, and they have two cul-de-sacs at the end. They had tennis courts there, so it's kind of right by their tennis courts that are in there is where that sewer is, that's there. So that's how we found out about the sewer on this here. Again, as we said, as Colleen brought up, if you said, we're approving this, but, you know, the first one's sewer, we'll approve this without sewer, however, it can only have fifteen units. You know, that's kind of where we're at. We know we can't get sixty-eight, because we would need sewer to do that. So that's kind of where that one is. So again, we've tried to keep this clean, we're not trying to muck up the waters. I just wanted to show people that there are some options out there, kind of get a straw, you know, hear what people kind of thought on this, and go from there. It hasn't been an easy work for me to figure out all this stuff here, and again, I apologize. It's just the way the world worked here, and honestly, I can't believe it's been January to now. I feel like it's still January right now, so I guess it's not, though. So that's where the sewer's at. I can ask and answer any questions or concerns or comments that you have on that. But again, I'm sorry I didn't have those numbers last time, but one is about forty-two-hundred feet, another one's about twenty-eight-hundred feet, and then, yes, the Ravencroft looks like it's about fifteen-hundred or so feet to the sewer. But again, it would need easements, cross easements, and work out some stuff with them that's there.
Matt, have you looked at or considered a community septic system?
We do those. I personally like individuals, I'm doing a sixty-two-unit elderly in Auburn right now, and the previous, Chinburg, did a community system. We're going with individuals for each, each two units. It's give or take a little bit on each side. I like having it for the individual units, set like two people, because you can have a little more control on what people are putting in their garbage disposals or putting down there, whereas one community system, you don't know what that is. So it's a give and take, both of them. The community system ends up being one big area with the big, as I call the Indian burial graves, the pipes coming out of them, so usually not as aesthetically pleasing. These are small, I just found out this last week, in Auburn, the elderly regulations, the septic approval specifically says only one-hundred-and-twenty-five gallons in elderly people in it. So the septics are not designed for like a two, three-bedroom type of stuff, just multifamily, they're specifically designed for elderly. So lower flows and that stuff, and the permit actually says it right on it, which was the first time I'd seen it on the permit. So, yes.
Thank you.
All right. So I guess with all of that, given, it seems like these are not going to be tied to each other, I'll ask the board, how do you, are we just going to, is it okay to just read in one set of criteria and apply it to all three? All right. So, yeah, if you want to go ahead and read in the five points, and we'll kind of, we'll go through each variance and vote.
Sure, I think that makes sense. So, yeah, again, we are proposing, obviously, an elderly housing development here. That's what's before the board tonight. Again, those are required to be within a one-mile radius from the intersection of the DW Highway and Babusak Lake Road, if you are west of the turnpike like we are. We're one-point-six miles north of that intersection on the west side of the turnpike. But the elderly housing zoning district, as it relates to the first variance criteria, the public interest, encourages construction of housing suitable for the occupancy of elderly persons, including congregate care, et cetera, while ensuring compliance with local planning standards, ladies policies, good building design, and the requirements for the health, safety, and general welfare of the inhabitants of the town. So again, we are point-six miles outside that district, but there really has been substantial development in the area since that radius boundary was first created, first went into effect. And I think the result of that is the one mile, I mean, you have to draw it somewhere, right? One mile, one and a half miles, two miles, that's all of zoning to some respect, but I think the one mile is probably a bit arbitrary as compared to how things were on the ground when the regulation was first passed. And I think the intent here is really to be walkability, access, easy access to services, et cetera. And there's been a substantial amount of development on DW Highway in this area since that regulation was passed. There is that sidewalk that goes all the way down Bedford Road to the DW intersection where the Walgreens is, and you have a number of new uses that have popped up there in the last five, ten, fifteen years, that really, you know, it makes sense for this lot to be considered suitable for an elderly housing development in light of that substantial new development. So I think for that reason, granting the variance would not be contrary to the public interest. Again, we're looking at the essential character of the area and public health and safety. We don't see any alteration to the essential character of the area. This proposed development is actually similar with other residential uses, similar, again, to that Ravencrest condominium development, which is not elderly development, to my knowledge, but a similar type of development, which is right there in the area. And if we were half a mile closer to the intersection, you know, this, we'd be within the boundary, and this would be permitted by right. We don't see any threat to the public health or safety. In terms of frontage, you know, minimum frontage requirements are typically intended to prevent overcrowding and congested development and ensure safe access to the greater roadway. We do have the seventy or so, seventy-eight feet of frontage on Bedford Road. We think that'll give sufficient access to the greater roadway network. You know, we're not trying to squeeze any houses in there into that narrow area by Bedford Road. All of this development is in the back lot portion. That really opens up, once you get to the interior of that lot, which has plenty of space for, for really all the concepts that we have proposed. The elderly housing regulations do allow the eight acres per, eight units per acre, so the zoning ordinance envisions up to potentially sixty-eight units on this site, of course, if you have sewer in there. But the one that's on the screen now proposes only that ten or fifteen due to the septic restrictions, or the restrictions that the septic would propose on the site. But in any event, we don't see overcrowding or congested development or impacts to public rights or the like. Number two, granting the variance will be consistent with the spirit of the ordinance. Again, the spirit of the elderly housing regulations are really to encourage this sort of walkable, accessible development close to services while balancing good planning and land design, and we think that this site is perfect for that sort of thing. The spirit of frontage, as I said, is to minimize overcrowding and congested development. We don't see that as an issue here. And we think that, you know, what we propose is really in harmony with the spirit of the ordinance and the, and the nature of the surrounding area, and we think it balances those, those rights and the character and makeup of the community. You know, we think it's, the fifteen units, really a modest proposal in terms of the size of the structures at two bedrooms and a little over fourteen-hundred square feet. We are municipal water, which is good, whether you're looking at, you know, especially if you're looking at a situation where you have to put in septic systems, because now you're not dealing with the seventy-five-foot protective well radius that needs to be separated from the septic systems, if that was what to be was proved tonight. So based on that, you know, it does open up the area for those septics without being too close to, you know, wells or well radiuses or the like. So we do think the lot can support what we've proposed, whether it's on public sewer or private septics.
Just to add to that, the water would, these would also be sprinkled, fully sprinkled units, the fifteen, because of the water.
Just to add to that, the water would, these would also be sprinkled, fully sprinkled units, the fifteen, because of the water.
Number three, granting the variances would do substantial justice, uh, as the board notes, this is the balancing test. Uh, we don't see any injury to the public if the variances are granted, uh, or gain to the public if the variance is denied, really only lost to the applicant. Uh, because we think this site is, uh, appropriate for the proposed development and wouldn't compromise the character of the area or abutting residential uses, um, and granting variances for, uh, are appropriate. Graining variances that are appropriate for the area does substantial justice. Certainly Merrimack needs more housing, um, most towns in southern New Hampshire could say the same thing, and particularly fifty-five plus um, housing, and this would be adding units to the town's housing stock, and again, they are modest two-bedroom, um, uh, units, so we think that granting the variances would do substantial justice. Number four, the values of surrounding properties will not be diminished, uh, we're not seeking to build.
Sorry, hold on one second, Patrick.
So, is it fact or opinion that Merrimack needs more housing?
I would say it's fact that everywhere in southern New Hampshire needs more housing based on current vacancy rates and, um, the inventory that's out there.
But is, what do you have to back that up, I mean, does you have anything to back that up?
It's, it's anecdotal, it seems to be a general, general trend. We've seen residential explode everywhere, you know, conquered south, uh, in the last five years, and that's a hundred percent due to the demand and the whack of inventory.
If you talk to any of the realtors, um, they're actively involved in it and.
The lack of inventory is more due to the fact that mortgage rates are really high and people aren't selling, I mean, based upon everything that I've read at least, but I'm just, was curious, that's all.
That's also true, but. There's more people moving in looking for homes too.
Okay.
And, and just to add to that, Patrick, I would say, you know, you're right, I mean, it's all kind of what we've seen around stuff like that, this unit is exactly what we did at Bowers Landing. Um, and there was a hundred and twenty-five of those and they've gone through and they're done and, you know.
Yeah, but Bowers Landing is like twenty-five years old, isn't it?
No, we just finished, no, we just finished the last unit. Oh, so sorry, yes, so when it originally started, the, the apartment's in front, but when I took over four years ago, we switched the townhomes to single family units like this. And we did the first phase was fifty-five units, and the second phase is sixty-five, and that just finished up about two years ago on that, so, um, I, it's a two-bedroom unit that doesn't bring children, doesn't, that actually development is not age restricted. It's multifamily and there aren't any kids in the development, the, the unit is just kind of a nice, fits in the neighborhoods and stuff like that, so again, why I thought bringing it up to this area fit in this area that was there, so.
My correct, my correction on Bower Landing, okay.
Conceptually, it's very much like Parker Village, which is fifty-five. And those units rarely if ever come on the market because somebody talks to their neighbor and says, oh, you're going to be selling? Good, because my, my brother-in-law is looking to get into here, and so they just, they never go on the market, they, they sell that quickly.
Number four, the values of surrounding properties will not be diminished. Uh, we're not seeking to build new structures and any setbacks such that the values of surrounding properties could be compromised, we are holding all setbacks. Um, proposing to maintain the wooded buffer that's shown on Matt's plan. Uh, again, we think this is consistent with abutting residential uses and the Ravencroft Association right, right nearby. Um, and site plan approval would be required from the planning board, uh, if this board were to grant any variances, and they would be taking, uh, a close look at, uh, those sorts of things as well. Number five, unnecessary hardship. This property does have several special conditions that distinguish it from other lots in the area. Uh, really its size is the primary one, it's, it's eight times the size of most abutting single-family lots, which are generally half an acre uh, to one acre in size, and the New Hampshire Supreme Court has held that, uh, in the case of Rand Court v. City of Manchester, that the fact that the property was so much larger than other properties in the area was a special condition, uh, that justified a finding of hardship. Uh, and really, the existence of an undeveloped lot of this size, uh, only a half mile outside of the elderly housing overlay district with frontage on a public road, uh, is cumulatively characteristics that make it extraordinarily unique for the area. And owing to those special conditions, we don't see a fair and substantial relationship between the purpose and application of the uh, zoning requirements that we seek variances from here. Again, consistent with the area, consistent with Ravencroft, uh, we have sufficient frontage to bring in a private road, uh, make that a clean four-way intersection at the, at the, uh, corner of, or the three, current three-way stop of Davis and Bedford. Um, that lot really, this lot really opens up once you get onto the interior, so we don't have any density or crowding issues. Um, whether there's sewer or septic, uh, we have sufficient space for both. Again, it's on town water, um, which is, which is great and really, uh, allows the lot to support this sort of thing too. Um, it's walkable to those newer uses in the area, that sidewalk that runs down Bedford to the corner, uh, at DW Highway, all those new uses that have popped up there recently, so. Um, under these unique circumstances, we think that, um, notwithstanding the strict application of the zoning ordinance, the purposes that uh, it seeks to encourage and the harms it seeks to prevent against aren't threatened if the variances are granted, and um, for all those reasons, we would submit that the proposed use is reasonable, uh, and I would be happy to answer any questions.
All right, Chuck.
Couple of comments before questions. One of the special conditions of that particular parcel is in fact that it is an abandoned sandpit of some historic nature. And the subsurface structure has been mined off to the aquifer. Several years ago, the town required that it be reclaimed. I'm not sure that the reclamation plan was necessarily good or bad, but it was reclaimed. And, uh, and, and made available as, uh, an, an existing parcel. I, I don't think there's anybody other than a Philadelphia lawyer that would say that it was a good idea to put septic systems down in there. And that, that does create a public risk uh, to the abutting neighbors and certainly to the community of Merrimack. We certainly have to recognize that, uh, Merrimack has been contaminated by one of our industrial, commercial citizens and have left us all in quite a quandary, uh, particularly in regards to forever chemicals. And the EPA has just recently, uh, indicated that they want to take that down to, um, non-detectable levels. Not only in our drinking water, but in our environment. And forever chemicals come from a variety of sources, and one of them certainly is septic systems. There's been some recommendations made to en, enhance the best management practices relative to uh, septic systems and the, uh, affluent that may carry contaminated and toxic material uh, into a pathway of an unknown distance and an unknown direction. It's appropriate that whatever is constructed in that parcel is on sewer. Despite the indications of experts in various fields, we know that. We don't have to be rocket scientists, we simply have to be adults that have experienced the difficulties in the town of Merrimack. And the difficulties in remediation with various brownfields and contaminated sites and so on and so on and so on. The history of Merrimack is replete with that. And I think it is incumbent upon us to avoid a recurrence of that type of thing by, uh, accepting uh, that, uh, septic is a remedy for a continued construction practice, uh, in the town of Merrimack. I know forty years ago, when the federal government came in with the Clean Water Act and required people to uh, put in wastewater treatment systems, uh, we, we did here in Merrimack, as did so many other places. But the very first place that septic sys, the wastewater treatment was mandated was in Newburyport, Massachusetts. They had over five thousand square miles of raw sewage coming down past them every day, and they threw up their hands and said, why should we have a treatment system? When the entire watershed doesn't, stand at the top and work your way down. But that's not what happened. And now we have a restored waterway, which is from time to time, um, not in compliance because of various incidents. And I suggest that we are seeing the seeds of one planted here, if we do not pay attention to the the manifest difficulty of foren, forever chemicals that go into our septic systems. No, they don't belong there, but yes, they go in there, because that's how people react without some protocol to suggest that a different behavior is required or necessary. And I personally have only the sewage issue in question here. I will not vote for anything that doesn't have public sewer. The rest of it? It's a marketplace issue, it's a planning board issue, it's many things, but I really feel strongly that we must require public sewer as has been thought aforesaid by the elderly housing complex regulations. And I would also mention that we also have a deficit budget here in the town of Merrimack. And that yes, we were supposed to update our master plan last year. And they were thinking about doing it this year. We certainly do need to update our master plan, things have changed in ten or more years. And yet, because of the deficit spending, uh, the, um, the default budget spending, we have put off master planning. In the absence of that, I say that this is the line of defense and that we need to be treating this as a real cautionary for what could befall us in the immediate future relative to, um, unintended consequences by trying to accommodate, uh, the regular economic cycle of business. If this, if there was nothing that wasn't more clear, I'd be glad to be more blunt.
Well, thank you very much for that, Chuck.
I'm not talking septic, I'm sorry, not talking septic on this particular variance, we're talking frontage. And I don't see a problem with the frontage on this one because essentially, you've got that small wind, uh, small portion that's almost like a driveway, which protects the visibility of the buildings from, uh, the street. So I don't have any problem with dealing with the frontage, and that's the issue that we're dealing with on this particular variance.
Well, on this particular variance, as you pointed out, is frontage, I thought it was a different variance, but nevertheless, I have no difficulty with frontage.
Yeah, so we're, we're gonna ultimately vote on all three separately, but we're not gonna treat them as separate petitions for the evening. So, uh, my questions were pertaining to the sewage, because that's where we left off in January, but, um, I, I, I'm, I'll just echo a lot of what I, what I've heard tonight, and that's that I'm, I'm much in favor of, uh, uh, of really requiring, uh, that sewage service be provided, um, and I see that there are options for that, which makes me happy. Um, I personally don't see any issues with frontage. I mean, I think this is a, this is a good project.
Or the one mile versus the elderly district.
Yeah, that.
You don't have any problem with either of those, those variances?
No.
Okay.
As I hit my microphone, Brian?
Yeah, I was just gonna say, I echo the same sentiment, uh, so that's where I stand.
All right, so I guess with that being said, what we can do is go ahead and open this to the public. Um, so for anyone that is looking to speak and has already been sworn in, please step up to the microphone in the back and just state your name and your address and go ahead and get started. Is there anyone that's looking to speak in favor of this petition? Is there anyone that's looking to speak against this petition? Okay? Okay?
My name is Kevin Finn, Twenty-seven Cabot Road.
Okay.
The first one is, this type of look that we're seeing up here is much more preferable. In January, I don't remember them discussing a singular or multiple sixty-eight unit development. I may be wrong, but I, I know, I, that came as a surprise to me, and I know they've added stuff along the way. But I, as an supporter, probably wouldn't be as in favor of that as something like you're picturing up there that has the single development homes. That would be number one. Number two, a, a, a long, long, long time ago, thirty-five years ago, there, uh, there was a, an issue, and I lived in the same home I live in now, about, um, uh, putting a pit in there, um, what was it, a stump, stump? Stump grinding pit, right, and there was an issue because there was some kind of body of water in the middle that had to be protected or something like that, and I just was wondering if that still exists. And is, if you guys are aware of that, and they're aware of that, not aware of it, but you know what I mean, if that presents anything different, uh, that that'll still be protected or that maybe doesn't matter anymore, thirty-five years ago, you know? So, I think that was the only two I had. Yeah, the conservation status of that water place, that water pool or whatever, how big it is now.
The pond is way down in the far corner.
Right, it's probably over what I, yeah.
So, no, it's closer to, um, Back River Road than it is to Cabot, it's back in that corner.
All right, so what they're doing though.
Is nowhere near that.
It doesn't impact that at all, okay. Well, again, I, I go back to my first point, in my opinion. Something like I see up there, ten or fifteen condominiums, as they're calling them, seems to me a lot more preferable to people in that area than a sixty-three, whether it's singular unit, and he wasn't sure, I don't think.
Sure.
Singular unit or multiple unit setup.
So, and, and the reason for that is that, uh, density requirements are very different when you're dealing with sewer versus,
Yeah.
uh, you know, versus having like a leach field, for example, so the, I, I, they, I don't think they're necessarily proposing specifically sixty-eight units, just that the, they would be able to build sixty-eight units without having to come to us because that's allowed within the, within the ordinance.
As long as it has sewer.
Yeah, it'd be a lot more attractive, I mean, that's part of my, you know, feeling of living right in the area for thirty-eight years. The, the, in my opinion, it'd easier be more attractive than one singular building, no matter how nice it looked or whatever, you know? Like all the other ones that have been built in town, to me, look, I'm sure they're beautiful inside, but to the front, they look somewhat like a hotel. And I know you can't see it from Bedford Road if no changes are made to the front, the, uh, building they would build because of that entryway, but, thank you.
All right, thank you. Is there anyone that's looking to speak in regards to this petition?
Dave Afonso, Three Woodridge Road, I just want some clarity, if you require sewage, they said the only property they would build is a sixty-eight unit building, is that correct?
No, what they said was they would be able to build up to sixty-eight without a variance. So if we put sewage in, that completely changes what they're allowed to build.
So they'll be allowed to build sixty-eight units if you require sewage, and they're gonna do that because of the cost to run sewage there?
They definitely could.
And that doesn't impact the, I forget the word to use, aesthetics of the area?
Well, if they, if they, if you look at this, if they're gonna put sixty-eight units and they're not gonna be, you know, lining the borders of the property, there are other ordinances that they have to follow, it just means that capacity-wise, it could accom- It just means that, capacity-wise, it could accommodate up to 68.
There's also sewage on Cathy Road, he didn't mention, which connects to Cabot and then to Woodridge on all the abutters. So when they did the new houses down there.
Sewage on Cabot.
On Cathy, which connects to Cabot, which connects to Woodridge, so, 33 Cathy.
Okay.
It's closer.
All right, thank you. I'm sure that's something we can also talk about. Any other comments in regards to this petition? All right. I will hand this back to you guys to address any of the comments that were made, such as the potential sewage connector near Cabot Road.
Yeah, I don't have an answer on that one there. I'm gonna, I wrote it down, take a look at it. Those are the three locations I saw with sewer, if there's a closer place. Just so everybody understands, as they said here, it doesn't mean we're coming forward with the 68, as the chairman said, it just means that we're allowed to, and he asked about how does that affect the aesthetics? If you deny the sewer variance to allow that, then there is no aesthetic to that. That's not, that's not the question in front of this board, so.
Right.
That's all. I think that was, oh, I'm sorry, the pond that you pointed out, that's up in here, right here, and I have a copy of the 1988 plan, the restoration plan that Chuck brought up, that they had to rebuild this year, and on this plan, that pond's in the exact same location in 1988, so, I mean, obviously it grew a little bit, it's not the exact same shape, but it's in the same location, so it didn't get relocated, at least from what I have from data that was submitted by Granite State Surveying in 1988. That was all, Mr. Chairman.
All right.
Rich, I do have a public comment letter that we received back in, I believe, just after January, if you'd like me to read that into the record.
Please, yes.
All right. So this is from John and Abigail Wallace of 31 Bedford Road. Dear Board, I am writing to share our family's specific concerns regarding the variance request by S.C. Development as discussed during the hearing conducted on January 31st, 2024. Many of the discussion points during the meeting, as well as the scope of the project, are of great concern to our family. We reside at 31 Bedford Road, which essentially has front row seats to the project proposed by S.E.C. Development, or S.C. Development. We purchased our home in November 2019, when it was in the state of disrepair, and have slowly created a home where we can raise and homeschool our two sons in a safe community that Merrimack offers. Since we moved to this community, my mother has moved in with us, our family walks across Bedford Road and into the Davis Road loop on a daily basis, sometimes even twice, where we are, have a wonderful rapport with our community members. Whenever we meet our, our neighbors, they refer to us as the blue house with two boys who play outside all the time. Despite the busyness of Bedford Road, this area has truly provided a community for our family to thrive. Our primary concern for this proposed project is the imposition of traffic that will take place directly in front of our home. As it stands, the traffic on Bedford Road can often be fast and congested. Davis Road is located directly across from the proposed access road to the 29 Bedford Road parcel. Fifteen dwellings will likely produce 30-plus or minus cars pulling in and out of the development while contending with the vehicles from Davis Road and the existing Bedford Road traffic, and even traffic light backup that can sometimes take place at the intersection of Back River Road, Bedford Road, and 93 South Onramp. Furthermore, while Bedford Road is busy, there are many pedestrians and bike riders, often kids with fishing poles in the summer, who frequent the road. It is, it would be a complete shame if conditions worsen for those of us who live on Bedford Road and use it on a daily basis. During the meeting on January 31st, Mr. Von Schoen raised specific concerns about the location of our home and the proximity to the project. He asked what we, what would be done to work with the owners of 31 Bedford Road, our family. The engineer gave a very generic answer about working with the owner, and no other specifics were given. I cannot, they state they can already attest that the company has already created a disruption with little to no effort to communicate with us, talks about incident they had on their property. Sorry, this is a long letter. And this will be off, also available at the town hall, should anyone wish to read that. This discussion regarding sewer access and the number of septic units for this project was also a concern. We support the zoning board's desire to ensure this project is completed responsibly and appropriate, and appreciate the board's desire to request more information before voting. However, we did not appreciate that the tone from the petitioner's engineer was eluded when he alluded to increasing the proposed units if required to create town sewage access for these homes. This felt like a threat as a homeowner. We were already concerned about the impact of the 15 homes that thought the petitioner was leveraging. More homes in the lot is unimaginable. Sorry, I just lost my place.
Ah, yeah.
The parcel of 29 Bedford Road was for sale for quite some time. We witnessed many potential buyers investigating the lot. We saw the real estate listing posted and removed several different times. We even saw some eager, we even had some eager buyers stop and ask us questions about it, while we had no answer. Throughout this entire process spanning several years, we wonder why the lot did not sell. We figured it was likely due to the sandpit nature of the land. After hearing the discussion regarding the lot, its history, and the questions of sustainable nature that it offers for such a project, we have serious concerns as its land can support such incumbents. When it becomes apparent that the lot at 29 Bedford Road had been sold, we were hoping that it might be a great place for a few new family homes and a way to increase the community we have cherished while living here. We understand the petitioner's prerogative to develop the land for profit, and we sympathize with the town's interest in more tax dollars. I am sorry to say that squeezing 15 homes like sardines into this lot only feels like a money grab. The conduct of the petitioner thus far conflicts with the neighborly nature of the area, and a negative impact on our homes and those that surround it leave us very concerned. They hope that you will consider these comments, and you can reach out to her via email or phone call. Again, this letter will be available to read at the Town's Community Development Office, and that is all.
All right, thank you. Would you guys like to address anything from that letter?
I'll just, I'll just address the traffic very briefly, which is primarily within the purview of the planning board, and they would take a look at traffic controls on site plan subdivision approval. But in terms of there already being an intersection there, that's actually a preferable situation from a traffic engineering perspective, because you already have a stop sign there on Davis Road, and you have this driveway directly across from an existing intersection, which is my understanding that that's a preferable design as compared to if this driveway was somewhat off-center from the intersection and potentially creating a situation where you wouldn't have, I don't wanna call it a four-way stop, because there's no stop signs on Bedford Road, but a four-way intersection. That's all.
I, I guess, my thoughts I've already verbalized. And again, I think to address to what that letter was saying is that we're not really here to discuss how many units or what they're gonna look like. A lot of those questions wind up being planning board questions, and I really try to minimize that in these sessions, so. I, I guess with that being said, if there's no further comment, we'll go ahead and close for discussion and/or deliberation. Actually, sorry. I'll reopen briefly. You gotta use the microphone, though, it's gotta be, yep.
Kevin Finn, Cabot Road. Just a quick comment. We, where I live on Cabot Road, there is no sewage, and I've heard people throwing around there's sewage on Cabot Road. They stopped that, like over near Ravencroft or somewhere like that. So I just wanted to make that clear. It's on to like, one of the comments said sewage ran up Cathy and then down Cabot. It does not.
No, they said that there was sewer on Cathy, and you could access the sewer on Cathy via Cabot Road.
So.
There is no, there is.
Cathy has it. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, before I close, any further comments regarding this petition? I'll go ahead and close. So the first one that we are voting on is specifically item four, which is regarding the public sewer. So do I, do I hear a motion?
Do we have wording for motions?
I'm looking for it.
And are you making the motion for the septic one? Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Can I ask a question, please?
Sure.
There is no sewer on Bedford?
So, yeah, the, the only answer we have is what's in the sheet that was provided, which has the map of where the sewer lines are.
The plan in front of you is the master plan of the town sewer. The green is where sewer is. So there is sewer on Bedford Road down this section here. There is none in front of us, no. And the sewer on Cathy was all proposed. Everything that's in purple here is all proposed sewer for the pump station number six that was supposed to be built, but hasn't been built.
I have pictures of the cats.
That's all right. Could be, there probably drainage.
Down, down close to the Baptist Church, there is sewer, but there isn't going closer to D.W. Highway on Bedford.
Oh, this must be Cathy way up here, too.
You want a motion?
I'd like a motion, please.
I make a motion to deny the variance under section 2.02.9, capital B, sub one of the zoning ordinance to permit a proposed elderly housing development to be serviced by private septic systems, whereas public sewer is required for the following reasons. And I think that's the reasons that we have stated during the meeting.
Before we continue, is this, is this acceptable, or do we need to go into specifics for what we're, we're citing? Because I, I would say...
Maybe briefly, but...
I, I would probably talk about how building septic at this point would be going against the public interest.
Okay, I will include that in my motion.
All in favor? All right, 5-0-0. So all members of the board have voted against item number four. So now we'll, we'll jump to item number two, which is variance under section 2.01.7 of the zoning ordinance to construct a proposed elderly housing development 1.6 miles from the Daniel Webster Highway and Babusak Lake intersection, whereas such developments are not permitted beyond a one-mile radius from the same, the same location. Would you like to make the motion?
Sure. I make a motion that the board finds the petitioner's responses to the statutory criteria are sufficient, proved each criteria is met, and the board adopts the petitioner's responses as the board's finding of fact, and further to grant the variance under section 2.01.7 of the zoning ordinance to construct a proposed elderly housing development 1.6 miles from the Daniel Webster Highway and Babusak Lake intersection, whereas such developments are not permitted beyond a one-mile radius from same, subject to the following conditions in the staff memo.
Second.
All right. Motion made by Lynn, seconded by Chuck. All in favor?
I have a question. Can I have a question?
Yes.
The, it says, "Sheltered and Varied associated with ZBA case blank and case blank." That's not referencing the two other items?
You're right that it is, but we are not going to be referencing item number four. Did you read that in, Lynn?
No, I read in two and three. Wait a minute.
I'm trying to make sure we get it right. Agreed.
I didn't find.
We just denied variance, you just denied number four. Correct.
But this one only addresses two and three.
Okay. All right, good. So all in favor? All opposed? All right, 4-1-0. And then for item number three, variance under section 2.02.9, B6 of the zoning ordinance to permit a proposed elderly housing development on a parcel having less than 100 feet of contiguous frontage on a public road, same location. This one was ZBA 2024-02.
I'm on a roll.
Go for it.
I make a motion that the board finds the petitioner's responses to the statutory criteria are sufficient, proved each criterion is met, and the board adopts the petitioner's responses as the board's finding of fact, and further to grant the variance under section 2.02.9, capital B, six of the zoning ordinance to permit a proposed elderly housing development on a parcel having less than 100 feet of contiguous frontage on a public road, subject to the following conditions in the staff memo.
Second. I'm sorry, missed the second seconded by Brian?
Yeah.
Motion made by Lynn, seconded by Brian. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? All right, 4-1-0. All right, so again, you guys have 30 days for anyone to make an appeal, but otherwise, good luck. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
Go Celtics.
And Bruins.
And Bruins.
Both of them?
Yeah.
Oh, you got...
Not both, um, they, they...
You wanna read those in?
I was gonna do it.
Oh, okay. Oh, yeah, they're last, okay.
All right, the next petition, agenda item five, C.A. Property Acquisitions LLC, petitioner, MTC Realty LLC owner, special exception under 2.02.3 C1F of the zoning ordinance to permit an animal hospital, animal daycare and grooming service use in the C2 General Commercial District, parcels located at 106 Herrick Street in C2 General Commercial and Aquifer Conservation Districts, tax map 3D-2, Lot 21, case ZBA 2024-07.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. For the record, Joe Pezznola from Hancock Associates, representing C.A. Associates, the petitioner. Just, just to get the, kind of the, the people involved here correct, this is for the Merrimack Veterinary Hospital and their relocation from their current position, current, current location, they're moving north to this, this parcel. But C.A. Associates is the developer and will be the ultimate owner of the land, and Merrimack Veterinary, Veterinary Hospital will be the, the leaseholder, and they'll operate the site, and just much like they do today.
Is that the one located next to the Anheuser-Busch plant?
Yep.
Midas, beside Midas.
Near Midas.
Okay, yeah.
Yeah. Merrimack Veterinary Hospital is part of the National Veterinary Associates, which is a global leader in veterinary hospitals. They have 1,400 facilities throughout, throughout internationally. With us tonight is, is Mark Wilholt from C.A. Associates, and also Ginny Gregg from NBA, and I believe Amy Hebert from NBA may be on, online, watching us. She's the, she's the hospital director down at the current facility here in, in town. So, onward do we go, just to make you, make sure you understand the players. The parcel that we're talking about is at 106 Herrick, which is just off of Daniel Webster Highway. It's a small street that accesses small residential properties and some commercial properties. It, the parcel itself is 1.5 acres. It has about 250 feet of frontage on Daniel Webster Highway and about 500 feet of frontage on, on Herrick. It's kind of on a curve in Herrick. The property is currently vacant. It is kind of a depression. It's, it's set down below Daniel Webster Highway and to a degree below Herrick Street. It, it again has frontage on, on kind of two sides by Herrick and one side by Daniel Webster Highway, and then there's some residential properties over directly to the, to the north of, of there.
Excuse me for a second. If you, sorry to interrupt you. Mr. Chair, didn't, I thought we, didn't we see this, we've seen this property before, right?
Yes, they have withdrawn their application.
Okay.
It was the ultimate Bimmer site, original site, I should say.
Cardio.
Yes.
All right, okay, thank you, sorry. Just continue.
No, no, I should have mentioned that.
Yeah.
So... So municipal sewer and water is available to the site. There's water in Herrick. There is sewer up on, on the intersection of Herrick and, and King Street. We would have to get the sewer down Herrick two there. Again, it's topographically set below Daniel Webster Highway. It's in the C2 District. It's in the Aquifer Conservancy District. Veterinary clinics and animal daycare are allowed by special exception, and that's what brings us here tonight, is application for special exception for the, for the use. The, the site plan features an 8,500 square foot, one-story facility with, with parking around three sides. On the north side, we've tried to buffer to the residential by having our infiltration basin there and, and a healthy buffer of landscaping, as well as a proposed six-foot stockade fence along that northerly boundary. We're coming into the site similar to the car dealership site plan that you may have, may remember. It's right on the curb so that there's ample site distance looking left and right on Herrick. Herrick's not, is not a busy street. When we do get out to the intersection of Herrick and Daniel Webster Highway, we have a great site distance, 1,000 feet in either direction. Very, very safe site to pull out from. Because of the topography, the site won't, the building really won't be highly visible, and that's not that important to, to the hospital. There will be a sign up on, on the intersection of Herrick and, and Daniel Webster Highway so people know where, that, that they're, they're down there. So I, I think it's a, it's, it's a fairly, fairly benign from, from that's, that standpoint. So, a little bit about Merrimack Veterinary Hospital, in case you don't, don't know, they're, they've been in town for 30 years. They, they're in need of a more efficient facility, so that's why they're, they're building. They'll continue to employ, the, their, move their group of 40 employees to the new facility. They, they'll continue to serve approximately 15 animals, pets a day. They do want to continue the pet daycare and grooming facility, but they will cease overnight boarding. So it'll just be during normal business hours, they'll have doggy daycare, animal daycare, and the, they have pet grooming services. There'll be limited outdoor activity. They will have a small area within alcove of the building on the north side. That'll be a grassed area for pet, for the pets to go out supervised and relieve themselves. And then they'll go right back in. There'll be no, no outdoor, no other outdoor activities. The building design will feature modern soundproofing, just again, in, in consideration for the, the neighbors. From a zoning standpoint, we fully comply with all of the zoning setbacks. There are additional setbacks to Daniel Webster Highway. We, we meet all of the frontage requirements, parking requirements, setbacks and height limitations, all, all of those things, and we've enumerated that on, on our, our plan. So, you know, we feel that we've put together a, a package that, that really serves, serves the community, but also serves the Merrimack Veterinary Hospital in getting them into a, a new, modern facility. So we have submitted site plan, landscape plan, a lighting plan, cover letter going through our zoning compliance. While maybe not germane to, to, to this board, we, we did submit the traffic memorandum. I know that'll be more subject for the planning board to review. Architectural plans, obviously, the application and abutters' lists and filing fees. So, as far as the arguments for special exception, we have come up with some, some arguments here with regards to how we comply, and I'll run through that, but I also have copies for the board.
So, yeah, we, we do already have the copies of the, of the, of the responses to the arg... Yeah, unfortunately, we can't.
I'll just, I'll go over it, but...
Okay.
Certainly.
So, number one, the specific site is appropriate location for such use or uses in terms of the overall community development. We're saying the proposed site is strategically located within the C2 District, which is designated for general commercial activities. This indicates the area's suitability for businesses that serve the community needs, including those related to pets and animals. And also the establishment of animal, an animal hospital, daycare and grooming services contributes positively to the community's overall development by addressing the growing demand for pet-related services. This enhances the area's appeal to residents, potential investors, fostering economic growth, growth and vitality. Number two, the use as developed will not adversely affect the neighborhood. Extensive planning and design considerations have been incorporated to ensure that the proposed animal services, animal service facility operates in harmony with the surrounding neighborhood. This includes soundproofing measures, waste management protocol, protocols, odor control systems to minimize any potential disruption. The facility's operating hours have been carefully scheduled to coincide with minimal neighborhood activities, further mitigating potential disturbances. Additionally, traffic studies indicate that the project influx of vehicles will not pose significant burden to the infrastructure or congestion levels. And this, very important added to this is just the, the ceasing of the, the boarding that they do do at the current facility. They're not bringing that forward in, in trying to make sure that they are sensitive to, to the neighborhood. And number three, there will be no nuisance or serious hazard to vehicles or pedestrians. Our argument is that stringent safety protocols have, protocols have been implemented to ensure that the establishment of the animal hospital, daycare and grooming services poses no threat to vehicles or pedestrians. This includes designating parking areas, clear signage, pedestrian pathways that are separate from vehicle traffic. Extensive planning and design considerations have been incorporated to ensure that the proposed animal service facility operates in harmony with the surrounding neighborhood. This includes, again, the soundproofing measures, waste management protocols, and odor control systems to minimize any potential disruptions. Additionally, comprehensive risk assessment have been conducted to identify and address any potential hazards with the operation of the proposed facility, and these measures combined with ongoing monitoring and maintenance guarantee the safety of both patrons and passersby. Number four, adequate and appropriate facilities will be provided for the proper operation of the proposed use or uses. The design and layout of proposed animal service facilities have been meticulously planned to accommodate the diverse needs of its occupants and visitors. Then this includes dedicated treatment rooms, play areas, interior play areas, grooming stations equipped with state-of-the-art equipment and amenities. Also, accessibility features have been incorporated to ensure that the facility is fully inclusive and compliant with all relevant regulations and standards. This includes wheelchair ramps, handrails, designated restrooms for individuals with disabilities, thereby promoting equal access and participation. In conclusion, we respectfully submit that the criteria for granting a special use success exception has been met. Proposed establishment of an animal hospital, daycare and grooming service within the C2 District aligns with the, with the town's development objectives, poses no adverse effects on the neighborhood, ensures public safety, and provides adequate facilities for its operation. We appreciate your careful consideration of this matter and respectfully request a favorable decision in granting the special use exception. Happy to answer any questions that the board or the public may have.
All right, thank you. Are there any questions from the board on this? All right, well, I'll go ahead and open this up to the public. Is there anyone in the public that's looking to speak, either in favor or against this petition?
Guess not.
All right, I'll go ahead and close. So with no further discussion, I'll go ahead and close the public, and go ahead and motion?
I make a mo, motion that the board finds the petitioner's response to the special exception criteria of the zoning ordinance are sufficient, proved each criterion is met, and the board adopts the petitioner's response as the board's findings of fact, and further to grant the special exception under special except... That's not gonna make sense. To grant the special exception under special exception under Section 2.02.3 C1F of the zoning ordinance to permit an animal hospital, animal daycare and grooming service, services in the C2 General Commercial District.
Second.
On the subject to the planning board's approval, or receiving site plan approval.
So noted.
Thank you.
All right. Motion made by Patrick, seconded by Brian. All in favor? All right, five zero zero. Special exception passes.
Thank you.
I, I have to say, I go back to that facility way back when Eric Clough first established it, and it's grown from there, and I'm pleased to see a business in town growing and thriving.
Thank you.
All right, so the, the next two agenda items, six and seven, from Marky Twardowski, petitioner and Three Palms LLC owner. They've requested that these be continued to the next hearing, so I'll read them in, and if somebody would like to make a motion, I would appreciate it. And that's variance under Section 2.02.4B of the zoning ordinance to allow a two-family home in the I-1 Industrial District where the use is not permitted. Parcels located at 5 Jennifer Drive in the I-1 Industrial, Aquifer Conservation of Lee overlay districts, tax map 40 dash one, lot 001, case ZBA 2024-09, and variance under Section 3.02 of the zoning ordinance to permit a two-family home on a lot with 24,715 square feet, whereas 80,000 square feet is required and a depth of 152.23 feet, whereas 200 is required at the same location, case 2024-08. Sure, yes. I just did.
Oh, you did. Oh, I, I move to continue this agenda item. Both agenda items to our next meeting, which is the April 24th?
May 29th.
May 29th, yes.
With no further written notice to abutters in this meeting room.
So moved, yes.
Thank you.
No problem.
Second.
All right, motion made by Brian, seconded by Lynn. All in favor? All right, five zero zero. Those are now moved to the next meeting. And then for the final petition, Tim O'Regan, petitioner, and Todd Gamash, owner, variance under Section 3.05 of the zoning ordinance to allow for the construction of a single-family home after raising the existing single-family home, 15.2 feet from the front property line, whereas 30 feet is required, 12 feet from the side property line, whereas 15 feet is required, and 32.3 from the rear property, whereas 40 is required. That doesn't leave much room for a home at that point. Parcel's located at 17 Jeb Road, Mar 2 Residential by Soils District, tax map 6A dash two, lot 169, case ZBA 2024-10. Good evening.
How are you doing, guys? Tim O'Regan. So, I mean, first I'll say it is completely only more conforming than what is there. I mean, and...
Given Jeb Road, not surprising.
Yeah, I mean, it, it's 100%. I mean, they, I think the, in the survey that you guys should all have...
Is your mic on? Right, right.
Maybe, okay, there we go. In the survey that I believe you guys all have, it should show the outline of the existing house inside there, which shows that it's only current, more conforming than what is currently there. There's not really particularly any downside to the variance, honestly.
Yeah, there's not a lot of room to work with here.
There is not.
All right. All right, so if you'd like to go ahead, do you have your, the criteria?
Do.
The variance criteria?
Oh, let's see. All right, so you want me to just shoot through each of these?
Okay. Yeah, just kind of, kind of read through them.
All right, so we got the variance is not contrary to the public interest. So I just, I'm just gonna read through basically what my...
Absolutely.
Okay. The request only raises the area's property values and allows continued use of a boat launch. My client and his family have graciously, graciously extended the use of to the Babuusik Lake community for decades. You guys look at the, there should be an overhead image in there somewhere at least. The right side of the property, yep. So the right side of the property, that's, that's used as a boat launch. So I mean, as far as a public interest, it's, there's not, there is no public boat launch. So as far as the people that are able to access the lake, that live on the lake, this is one of their only ways to do so. So we can't push that any further towards the center. That, and there's also, we're pretty close right now, I think, to where the new septic tank is, and I think we need 10 feet or what have you, but we're, we're, we are close to the requirement as it is, and that's the reason why we wouldn't want to push it any further in that direction also.
Yeah, makes sense.
All right. And then, "Spirit of the ordinance is observed because per Section 1.01, to promote convenience and make it an attractive place to live. The right side of the property, while facing Babuusik Lake from Jeb Road, is used by the local lake community as boat launch, i.e. convenience. Further, replacing the dilapidated lake house with a brand-new house is good for the local economy, property values." I mean, there's not any, you know, downside to that. Granting the variance would do substantial justice because the current block foundation takes on several feet of water under heavy rains. The property will not have the ability to continue use under its current state. It has been the family for a long time. My clients are just looking to make it a suitable retirement home. You know, it would, the block foundation that has some sort of a basement currently would be being replaced with a slab and frost walls because that's a little more suitable for being on, in, at that high of a water table area. Granting the variance would not diminish the values of surrounding properties because we are replacing a well-worn property with a brand-new one. That's more conforming than the current one is. Owing to the following special conditions of the property that distinguish it from other properties in the area, explain how no fair and substantial relationship exists between the general public, purpose of the ordinance provision, and specific application of that provision of the property. The continued use of the boat ramp prevents shifting the property to the center much further. The septic system, just replaced out of necessity, doesn't allow shifting the property any further to the center because of what I mentioned earlier. Existing property takes on water in the basement due to a block foundation below grade. Proposed use isn't a reasonable one because there are no negative effects for the abutters, community, municipalities, or the town of Merrimack. This is only a positive move for a beautiful lakefront property, a little aid in the continued use of said property while increasing surrounding property values.
All right, any questions from the board? All right, seems extremely straightforward, so, thank you. I'll go ahead and open to the public. Is there anyone looking to speak, either in favor or against this?
Well, it's their house, so...
Well, I'll go...
And it will be your new house, hopefully.
Yeah. I'll go ahead and close. With no further discussion, I entertain a motion.
I make a motion that the board finds the petitioner's responses to the statutory criteria are sufficient, provided each criterion is met, the board adopts petitioner's responses as the board's finding of fact, and further to grant... Am I reading the right one?
Yes.
Okay. Three, three variances under Section 3.05 of the zoning ordinance to allow for the construction of a single-family home after raising the existing single-family home, 15.2 feet from the front property line, whereas 30 feet is required, 12 feet from the side property line, where 15 feet is required, and 32.3 feet from the rear property line, whereas 40 feet is required.
I'll second.
All right, motion made by Brian, seconded by Lynn. All in favor? Alright, motion made by Brian, seconded by Lynn. All in favor? 5-0-0. So, motion passes. There are 30, there's a 30-day window where somebody could appeal this decision, but other than that, congratulations and good luck.
Thanks, guys.
Alright, thank you.
Funny, I just want to add this. I tried to buy that property on Bedford Road to build my own house.
29?
Yep.
Yeah.
It just happened to be there. I live right on Backriver, and I just thought it was funny. I was like, I'm like, huh, that's what ended up happening with that.
Well, not yet.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you, take care. Alright. Any discussion of other things?
Minutes.
Alright, minutes?
I move we approve as distributed.
Okay, motion made by Lynn?
Second.
Seconded by Brian. All in favor? Like, that can't be right.
I wasn't, oh.
You weren't there?
You weren't there.
I wasn't there, but I'll vote.
I will, I will, I'll be the, I'll be the passing vote, even though I was not there.
Wait a second, so, hold on, hold on.
You don't have to abstain, as long as you read the minutes, even if you weren't in attendance.
Did you read?
Okay. Well, three, oppose, abstain. So, we'll say.
3-0-2?
You're, you're abstaining?
No, not, I, start the vote over again.
All in favor? All in favor.
Well, can you raise your hand? Did he raise his hand if he was?
Nope, I'm raising my hand.
No, because he's an alternate, so.
There's the three.
Okay.
Abstain? Okay, so 3-0-2. Alright, who wants to do the last one?
I move we adjourn.
Alright, all in favor? Alright, good night, everyone. Good night.